Valley Talk on News Talk 1580 KGAL.
And good morning, I'm Dave Adams, this is Valley Talk, glad to have you with us today. We are going to be talking about essentially three topics on the program today. First of all, we're going to be talking about the Highway 20 Improvement Project near Eddyville. That's a, it's, shall we say, share of challenges here in the future. Hasso Haring, or in the past and going forward to the future, they're trying to figure out exactly what to do to take those curves out of Highway 20, make it safer, but do it in a way that remains. They tried to put up a bridge, but apparently the bridge supports were moving, they decided building the bridge wasn't such a good idea, now they're trying to decide what to do. Rick Little with the Oregon Department of Transportation on the phone with us, Hasso Haring in the studios with us. That's the topic of the first segment of the show. Second segment, about 20 minutes after, we're going to be talking about the special session. Hasso Haring will be part of the conversation as well. To give, to answer a request from Nike, they want the tax package to stay the same, to guarantee that they're looking at the same tax structure, and if they state agreed to do that, which they did, then Nike will expand. We did put in a request for information from Nike and actually wanted them to be on the show, they declined, but they did answer three or four questions. Andy Olson, State Representative from the Albany area, will be with us on that part of the program, which will start about 20 minutes after, and we'll talk about his take on the Nike request and the special session. Should we have used a special session? Should there have been a better way, more cost-effective way to do that? We'll talk about that, second segment of the show. Third segment, we are going to be talking to John Gibson about some of the year-end economic things that are happening, and that's segment three of Valley Talk today. I'm Dave Adams, Hasso Haring with us today. Do want to remind you to sign up for the Quiznos Taste on Us giveaway. Simply send an email to dave@kgal.com, or call the radio station at 451-KGAL, or also the other phone line is 926-KGAL, and say you want to be put in the Quiznos Taste on Us drawing, and we'll draw for that at the end of the show. So, thank you for listening and welcome to Valley Talk. Highway 20, project near Eddyville. Rick, thanks for being with us on Valley Talk today.
Well, thank you for inviting me. Good morning, Hasso and Dave.
Hi, Rick, glad to see you, talk to you again.
Good to talk to you, I've been enjoying your blog, I have to admit.
Okay. Well, I have something to say about Highway 20 and the Pioneer Mountain to Eddyville project on that, a day or so ago, it seems like. And the question is, you know, tomorrow, on Wednesday, the Oregon Transportation Commission is going to meet, and among other things, will discuss a request to allocate some more money to that project. As I understand it, the cost so far has run around $200 million, $201 million to be exact, and the plan is to allocate, to finish it in such a way that the estimate of the additional cost would be about $197 million. So bringing the entire cost of this project to nearly $400 million. Now, the project shortens about 10 miles of Highway 20 to about five and a half miles, and straightens out some kinks in the road that exist now. Those hairpin turns are a little difficult to negotiate, especially for interstate trucks, and they have led, and they have been the scene of some accidents, some serious bad accidents, fatal accidents. So it makes some, I mean, there's some rationale for having gone through that whole thing, but you have to wonder, at this enormous cost, you know, 400, nearly 400 million dollars, whether it was worth cutting out four and a half miles of distance between Corvallis and Newport. What's the, what's the, what's the ODOT response to that sort of a question?
Well, I guess my response personally would be, we can't go backwards. We can only go forwards. The coastal communities decades ago identified the improvement of US 20 as very critical to the growth of their area, for the distribution of commerce, and for the safety of their traveling public. It was a priority at a statewide level for many years to get this highway project completed, and yes, it suffered some setbacks, probably more so than any other project in our generation of engineers. But the need that created the project decades ago still exists, Hasso.
Sure, the project began with a, with an approach to construction that called for a design contract, that is, a design, construction, design-build contract, where the contractor, the eventual winner of this contract, was also the one who designed it. Did ODOT engineers have a hand in the design? Did they authorize the original design? That called for, if I recall, 10 bridges in that section, six of them, six of them, I believe, have been completed, and those four were started and caused trouble and were not completed, and now are being torn down. So, did ODOT approve, I mean, have a hand in pushing for this bridge design?
Well, ODOT certainly made the decision to take this particular project, design-build, and it did so long before the project started in 2005, because the staff on hand at that time was simply not of such a level to tackle a project of this complexity at that time with all the other projects that they were designing and building across the state. You have to keep in mind that at the, at the time this project really culminated in construction, there had been a pretty significant increase in funding available for highway improvements around the state, which basically kept our staff very busy. We knew there was a need for this project, it was a priority, and the decision was made to take it design-build. What design-build does is it puts the design of the project, as well as the construction, in the hands of the contractor. Design-bid-build projects, which many people are familiar with, are usually designed by ODOT, and then they're put out to bid by contractors, and the contractors bid to construct the project as designed by ODOT. Design-build shifts that responsibility to the contractor itself, and ODOT made the determination based on all the other projects that it had on its hands at that particular time. Was it the best decision? I think hindsight will, will answer that resoundingly, no.
Well, I'm not sure, Rick, and the idea of the, of the design-build approach certainly, I don't think anybody faults that necessarily. I think the, the thing I'm wondering about, whether or not the idea of building bridges in those particular places was something that was suggested to the contractor, or to say, or was it said to the contractor, "Look, here's what we want you to do, we want you to design a bunch of bridges," instead of, for example...
We can't direct a project that's design-build, so we just, I mean, the rules of design-build simply don't allow us to tell the design-builder how to design the project. That responsibility is the contractor's. Now, the question of bridges came up during the environmental analysis. The attractiveness of bridges to the environmental regulators was great. They would rather see crossing, fish-bearing stream crossing with a bridge than with a culvert, which, you know, creates some impacts on fish stocks. So, this particular contractor, when they submitted their original bid for the project, included the construction of the bridges, which many regulators found attractive, which ODOT found attractive, and was it the deciding factor? No, but it was a factor in the original consideration.
So, the idea that the landscape in that part of the country is mostly moving all the time, did not, did not come up at the time, right?
That's not quite correct, Hasso. In the environmental analysis, the original environmental analysis, there were some landslides that were known in the area, and that were identified, and at the time that we put out the request for proposals to the contractors, we specified that those contractors would have to do additional study, additional research, and learn more about not only the identified landslides, but any others in the area. So, we certainly didn't go into this thinking, "Oh gosh, there aren't any landslides in this area." I mean, after all, this is the coastal range. There were some identified, and that was, you know, that played a small role in the decision to go design-build, because the risk of taking on those landslides, then becomes the risk of the contractor rather than the owner of the project.
Now, we are, of course, at this juncture, and you say, and obviously you point out that you can't go backwards. As I mentioned, the Transportation Commission is going to act on this request most likely tomorrow. Is there, are there any alternatives to the idea of going ahead with the completion of this project? For example, I had, I had read in the press somewhere that somebody may have been thinking of saying, "Well, how about we not spend any more money on this project, but instead do something else to straighten out the remaining curves on that section of the highway?" Is that a possibility?
So, the highway administrator, when he realized that there was going to be a request for an additional $176.6 million from the Oregon Transportation Commission to complete this project, didn't want to go in and just submit that as an isolated standalone request. He wanted to provide a range of options to the commission to consider, that would help put the completion of this project in perspective. So what will be occurring tomorrow before the Transportation Commission is that they will be presented with five different options to consider in moving forward with the next phase of this project. Two of the options would complete the project as it has begun, in other words, it would complete the realignment, the new alignment of the project. Two of the options would address the existing US 20, and adjust, on one option, we go in and widen the curves, this is just very general conversation here, not specific, but one option would widen the curves, the other of the two options addressing the US 20 would realign the curves and widen the roadway in some locations. And the fifth option would be, what would it take to bring this project to an end? All of these have risks, all of them have costs associated with them, and the intent of the highway administrator was to give the commission this range of options as a way of offering the commission perspective of their decision.
The idea of widening some of the curves, and that option, in other words, would that be less expensive?
One of the two options to address the US 20 would be marginally less expensive. I don't have exact numbers for you, because to be honest with you, the final presentation to the Oregon Transportation Commission is still in draft form, and they're still tweaking it, but I can tell you that one option, the larger of the two options addressing US 20, the current US 20, would actually carry a price tag that would be in the neighborhood of 15 to 16 million dollars more than completing the new alignment. The lesser of the two alternatives for the existing US 20 would come in close to $90 million less than completing the new alignment. So, one is more expensive, one is less expensive.
And I guess I think it is worth remembering that much of the work on the new alignment really has been done, as I understand.
That's a very good point, Hasso, I'm glad you raised that, because really what we're talking about, we're talking about a five and a half mile new alignment, and more than half of that has already been completed and paved. So we're really talking about roughly about a two and a half mile segment of roadway that happens to be the area, include the areas where the four bridges were to be located. When, when the ground movement was detected in 2010, that indicated that those bridge columns were moving, and then ultimately the decision was made to replace those bridges with culverts. This is all in an area that's about less than, well, it's about two and a half miles long.
And so, it is interesting also to note what the alternative, what the recommended option for completing the project there is. Instead of bridges, the idea is to fill the valleys essentially with, as you pointed out to me earlier, three and a half million cubic yards of material that is going to be moved, I guess, from elsewhere, probably from the rest of the hills. Describe how that is going to be done.
Well, you hit on it there, from the rest of the hills. This, this whole project has been one of cuts and fills. Keep in mind, we're going through the coastal range, it's a mountain range, and in order to keep the alignment at a certain level, we would cut through some of the mountains or hills, and we would take that material and fill the valleys or the low spots as we went along, and that's the way a lot of this project has already been built. We've already moved more than 4 million cubic yards of material, as we like to say, that's enough to fill a research stadium seven times. We anticipate having to move another three and a half million cubic yards of material as part of the completion of the project. Included in that is additional landslide mitigation buttresses that need to be constructed. So, when it was decided to replace the bridges with the culverts, we set about to demolish those bridge components that had already been completed. There were four bridges that we're talking about here, and only one had actually been completed. The others were in various stages of completion. Since that time, so since May, when ODOT took the project back over, it's no longer a design-build project like we talked about earlier. This is an ODOT-run project, and since May, when we took it over, we've, we've demolished and removed the bridge and the bridge components that had already been constructed.
The, these culverts that you mentioned, of course, they, they would be carrying the streams that run through those valleys, and the idea originally was that the bridges would leave those streams more untouched, I guess, is that right?
Correct.
And so now, the, the streams will run through culverts instead. The culverts, though, are not going to be built right away. Explain that.
Well, they're, as I understand it, they're, and keep in mind, I'm not an engineer, so, in fact, they get nervous whenever I talk, because, because I'm not an engineer.
Good thing, too, because if an engineer talked to you, you wouldn't be able to understand the thing.
Well, I'm not going to go there either, Hasso. So, yeah, the culverts would definitely have an impact to the fish runs, if the fish runs made it up that, that far, and in order to mitigate that impact, we've agreed to a mitigation plan that would include some enhancements made to the Yucuna River estuary.
You know, it's amazing how far upstreams fish actually run. It is, I mean, completely beside the point, but sometimes, I mean, way up someplace where you wouldn't possibly think a fish could ever go, you'll find them if you really look for them. There's another question about this project that I hope you can address, and that has to do with the money. The additional money that is going to be spent on this project would come from various sources. Would it affect other highway projects that are now on the planning stage? In other words, would it delay those projects?
Well, obviously, whenever you take a large sum of money out of a budget, it's going to have an impact on other projects. Now, I will say this, that about half of the amount of money we're talking about, and the request before the Oregon Transportation Commission is for $176.6 million. That's how much ODOT is, is going to ask for to complete this project. About half of that is coming from savings from other projects and programs, because typically, you know, I mentioned earlier about the influx of funding for highway improvements over the past decade or so. We have consistently delivered projects under budget, and at this point, we have a pretty good savings account, enough that we think that we can fund about half of that $176 million with the savings from other projects. In addition to that, in the time period that led up to this most recent reauthorization of highway funding in the nation by Congress, known as the MAP-21 funds, that's the acronym from Congress, MAP-21, we were very conservative, because it was very unclear to us how much money we might get from the federal government. So we were extremely conservative in what projects we planned for, for 2013 and 2014. As it turned out, the MAP-21 funding was in excess of anything we planned for, so we have an excess in, or unaccounted-for MAP-21 funds. So we think with the savings and with the conservative budgeting that we had already done, we can, we can come up with that $176.6 million.
So you don't think, Rick, that approval of this money, if it in fact gets approved, will delay any other projects that are already in the pipeline?
There is no other project identified that is funded, that is targeted by these funds, that we can point to and say with any, with any definition that it'll have a direct impact. No.
If, if the plan goes ahead as now, you know, as you just outlined, the highway will be ready for traffic, for cars and trucks to go to the coast from the Willamette Valley, what year?
Well, when we took the project over in May, we estimated we would have the highway ready for traffic in 2015. Since that time, we've been able to gather an awful lot more information from all the instruments, more than 100 that we've installed over the past year at various locations of the project corridor, and we've gathered a tremendous amount of data from that.
These are instruments measuring the movement of the earth?
Measuring ground movement, measuring groundwater pressure. Groundwater pressure plays a fascinating role in the activity of the landslide, and landslides in general, and, and part of this first phase of construction that we kicked off in May is actually draining the hillsides of groundwater by installing horizontal drains, and we've, we've installed a slew of them. I have an exact number, actually, like 190,000 feet of horizontal drains since May.
Where do they drain this water to?
They, they put it back into the creeks, into the drainages that exist up there.
Okay.
So, anyway, where I was going with this was, originally we thought we would put traffic on in 2015. We now think that if we can study the effects of the horizontal drains, and continue to gather data from the other instrumentation, if we had another year before we put traffic on it, before we made those decisions, we could refine our ultimate design, the final design, and very likely could save millions of dollars, and we think just by construction staging alone, when we get back to those culverts, we can save more than $20 million. So, we're, right now, we're thinking, we would prefer to put traffic on in 2016 and use that year to gather more information to save more money and refine the design. Now, in addition to that, the highway administrator is of the opinion that he really doesn't want a date to be driving decisions on this project. It would be great if we could put traffic on in 2016, it would be better if we could put it on sooner, but if it has to come later, as long as we build a better project, that's what the highway administrator wants right now.
And even if the highway gets, is able to be used in 2016, as I understand it, there would be some additional work that would need to be done for a couple of years after that?
That's correct, there's some environmental work, and again, with respect to those culverts, you know, the earlier you put traffic on with the culverts, you might have to go in with a temporary pipe and then come back and put the culverts in. If you can delay that sort of work for a year and just put the culverts in, you can save a tremendous amount of money. But there would be additional work that might take the project until 2018 to complete.
So, we've been talking about the Highway 20 project between Pioneer Mountain and Eddyville, which has been going on for a long time, and I might say, which is being anticipated with great eagerness by a lot of travelers between the Corvallis area and the Albany area, and the whole Willamette Valley, and the central coast, Newport, Walport, Lincoln City, those kinds of places, very important to the state of Oregon, and that is why, I guess, the state is willing to spend all that money on it. By the way, you mentioned one thing, US 20 is of course the official name of that road. Explain to the, to us what US really stands for. Does not stand for United States, does it?
Boy, I always thought it did.
Oh, okay.
What does it stand for, Hasso?
Our highway system, you know, we have federal highways and we have state highways.
Somewhere, somewhere I read once that it stands for something like Universal System or some such thing.
It may. Hasso, you know, you come up with the best questions.
I'm not sure.
I'm always hesitant to answer your questions, because what seems apparent to me is not necessarily the truth, and you have, you have a nose for that.
Just an off-the-wall question, but it's something for us to research, and when we find the answer, we'll report that.
Universal Street, maybe? That's a guess on my part. So, now, the Oregon Transportation Commission considering this issue tomorrow?
That's correct.
What's exactly on the agenda? What are they doing?
Well, what's on the agenda is a request to amend the STIP, that's the Funding Mechanism, the statewide transportation improvement program, to increase the funding to the project by $176.6 million. Now, as part of that request, the highway administrator will make this presentation where he'll lay out five different options, two of which to complete the project, two of which to abandon the project and to make modifications to the existing US 20, and one option to just see what it takes to actually bring this project to an end.
Has ODOT heard from any of its constituencies, city of Newport, city of Corvallis, AAA, or anybody else about what the public would prefer?
Absolutely. You know, it's that no-build option that once word got out that there was actually an option to button up the project and bring it to an end, brought out some strong reaction from those coastal communities, and from legislators and elected officials, as well as members of the area commissions on transportation.
And the reaction was which way?
Well, the reaction, I would say the overriding reaction, the strongest reaction has been, "Don't stop this project." That the need for it is still as great now, if not greater than before, and it is unfortunate that we've reached the point where the project has, has cost as much as it has, and has presented as difficult challenges as it has, but don't turn back away from it now.
It would be kind of a testament to futility to see all that, that finished road that didn't go anywhere. So I think I can understand, I can understand that reaction.
The highway to nowhere, yeah. So, go ahead.
I will say that in some of the news media coverage, some interesting viewpoints have been raised to the alternative. There's at least one state senator who's raising a question of whether or not it's time to call this project to a halt, and there is, there have been comments made by at least one of the commission members that raises a question as to whether or not he might support the option to bring the project to an end, so...
Be interesting to see what OTC says.
It really will. This item is on the agenda at about 12:45 at this point. They may, I don't know what they, if they typically move the agenda items around or not, I don't think they will. They have a very full agenda tomorrow. It is a public meeting, and it's in the Gail Acterman Conference Room of the Transportation Building, which is at 355 Capitol Street Northwest in Salem.
Okay, Rick, we need to move on to the next segment of the show. We do appreciate your time. We'll be talking to you again in the future and see how this and other projects go.
Well, thank you very much. Wish you and your listeners, and Hasso, your readers, the happiest of holidays, and please travel safely.
Thank you, Rick.
Okay, Rick, have a great day. This is Valley Talk. Coming up next, after we take a break or two, we're going to be talking to Andy Olson, State Representative from the Albany area, Oregon Legislature. The legislature approved a tax deal with Nike in a one-day special session. The promise from Nike is, "Hey, you guys, if you, if you keep our tax picture the same, we're going to provide X number of jobs." And the Oregon Legislature, rather soundly, 55 in the House and 22 to 6 in the Senate, agreed. The governor's going to sign the plan, and we're going to be talking to Andy Olson about what he thinks about that. Hasso has some questions as well, and talking about this particular Nike tax deal. Did it warrant a one-day special session? What do you think? Send us an email, dave@kgal.com, we'll talk about that in just a moment. Hasso Haring in the studio with us, I'm Dave Adams, this is Valley Talk. Don't forget to sign up for the Quiznos Taste on Us. Send an email to the same address, dave@kgal.com, or call the station at 451-KGAL or 926-KGAL. End of the show, we'll draw hopefully your name. Back in a moment.
The Mennonite Village presents Memories of Christmas.
We usually try to have a gift tree where people take, draw the names of all the residents off, and that's always a real special time. Each resident has their name on there, and we can draw the names off, buy a gift for them, and bring it wrapped up and put it under the tree, and that's always a really special time for the residents, and I think for the staff, too. I think we really enjoy that.
That is Bev Knox, a longtime employee at the Mennonite Village. Bev continues.
I think as far as the Christmases go with my own family, we enjoy just being together there again. We enjoy the traditional Christmas meals, the turkey, the ham, and all the fixings that go with it, just being together as a family and enjoying each other.
Memories of Christmas, brought to you by the folks at the Mennonite Village of Albany. These memories are available on the World Wide Web at kgal.com. Click on the Mennonite Village link to the left.
Today.
Mr. Bilbo, where are you off to?
I'm going to the Mennonite Village.
Now at Carmike 12.
Have a tale or two to tell, you're old and ready.
You promised that I would come back.
No.
The Hobbit is now showing at Carmike 12.
Loyalty.
I'm not.
You can ask me more than that.
The Hobbit, an unexpected journey with a PG-13, now playing in 3D.
This is an astounding story of courage and endurance unparalleled in the history of shipwrecks.
Now showing at Carmike 12. Now showing at Carmike 12.
No! Go away!
Based on the beloved bestseller, Two Unlikely Castaways.
You have to trust me.
One incredible journey, Home, from Academy Award-winning director Ang Lee, Life of Pi.
Now showing at Carmike 12.
In 3D.
The highly acclaimed and internationally famous men's a cappella choral group from Yale University is coming to Albany for one concert. The name of the group? Spizwinks?
Ever since I was a young boy, I played that silver ball from soho down to Brighton.
Since 1913, the Spizwinks have shown the world that a bunch of college guys sporting sweet harmonies and a strange name are a winning combination. It's a fundraiser for the South Albany High School Choirs, sponsored by K-Gal and K-Show Radio. Tickets available now at South Albany High School, online through kgal.com or kshow.net. Remaining tickets available at the door. Don't miss this rare opportunity to see and hear the Winks Spizwinks in person. It'll be memorable and great fun, and you'll help out the South Albany High School choral program. The Spizwinks from Yale University, live and in person, Wednesday, January 9, 7 p.m., Russell Trip Performance Center, LBCC in Albany.
Less hype, just quality news, sports, and smart talk from your friends at 1580 K-GAL.
This is Valley Talk. I'm Dave Adams. Again, Hasso Harring in the studio with us today. And once again, we are on the telephone. Andy Olson from the Albany area, state representative, is with us. Andy, thank you for taking time out of your busy schedule and being with us on Valley Talk today.
Well, thanks, Dave.
Nike had a proposal that they worked out, a deal with the governor, and it looks like the legislature, after some discussions, of course, they say if you ever don't want to get anything done, get a huge group of people together, and that's typically what, you know, this is maybe, I'll need to comment on my part, but the legislature passed 50 to 5 in the House, 22 to 6 in the Senate, approving House Bill 4200, which basically says that with some concerns, the legislature goes on with this, securing a tax deal for Nike in the promise of jobs. What do you think about, first of all, my question is, was a special session the appropriate way to handle this?
Well, I think what was happening was the special session wasn't only about keeping Nike from leaving, because I think that that's a piece of it also, but it also rang true that the new law will enable Oregon Company to remain and expand its operations. You know, I can't speak what was going on in the back rooms with that one, Dave and Hasso, but, you know, obviously, there was something there that if something wasn't done immediately with the single sales tax factor issue, the potential of losing Nike existed.
Well, you know, Andy, this is Hasso. I was curious about the motivation for the thing. It seems to me it was the most unusual thing I've really ever, I can remember, about calling the legislature into a special session that's very, very short notice, less than a week, in order to make a special, to meet a special request from a single private enterprise. And, I mean, that shows how influential, of course, Nike is. Nike, the big apparel manufacturer or provider, seller, designer, and so on, how influential that company is in Oregon. And it seems to me that if a company can get that accomplished, then it could just as easily have influenced the legislature into keeping its tax status the way it is later on. I mean, the need for a special session for that kind of a thing seemed to me not at all apparent.
Well, the one thing, Hasso, that seemed to be constantly ringing, repeating, holding true during that full day and actually the entire week as we were preparing for last Friday, is it just seemed like the change or the addition to the law just offered certainty for Nike. And I understand clearly what you're saying with that, but this seemed to be one of the biggest things that the governor was really pushing for and supporting for right now, that the government wouldn't pull some type of bait and switch on the tax policy that it settled on in Oregon. And this was more kind of a situation to just have some ready response to and deal with it from that angle.
Are you aware of any movement in the legislature or anywhere else in the political establishment that wanted to change the tax system that we have for multinational corporations that are based in Oregon?
Yeah, it's a great question. No, I'm not.
So, in other words, there was nothing in the wind that anybody knows of that would have prompted Nike to make that request?
Well, other than, you know, what I've already kind of expanded on, on that whole issue, ensuring that something else wouldn't change, but again, I'm not ready to that.
Yeah. The system we're talking about, by the way, has to do with the taxation of corporations in the income tax, or what is called, not really, I mean, it's an income tax, but it's called the corporate excise tax.
Right.
And the way I understand it, Oregon now taxes those companies in the following way. It considers only the sales or the revenue that the company has from sales inside the state. So, when a company like Nike sells stuff in Europe and has revenue from that, sells stuff all over the country and all over the world, that revenue is not counted toward income for the Oregon income tax purpose. Is that right?
Yeah, I think that's right, because you've got three different tax structures here. You've got the personal, the property, and then what you're describing, the corporate or the single sales tax factor issue.
Right.
And we're focusing on that third leg of that stool.
Yeah, I mean, we're not talking about Nike's property tax, we're not talking about anything else. We're not, I mean, for example, I think the point has been made that Oregon could, I mean, first of all, let's describe what this legislation did. Can you describe what the legislation actually authorizes?
Well, my understanding, the way I have heard what this does, it actually gives the authority to the governor to extend this toward the oversight toward the legislature of this, to initiate contracts that provide certainty in our corporate tax mechanism for companies promising to create, and I believe it was at least 500 jobs and $150 million capital investment.
And that's, that's the nutshell version. Right, and sure, and the contract would be negotiated by the governor with the help, I think, of the director of the Department of Business Development. That's really not the name of it, but...
It's Oregon Business, or Business Oregon.
That's the one. And the contract would be for five years, and the legislature would get an annual report, or maybe a biannual report, on how the company is meeting its obligations to have invested at least $150 million and created at least 500 jobs. Is that right?
That's correct.
So...
Right, over that five-year period of time.
And it's, the legislation, by the way, is, I mean, I read it, it's four pages long, and it's the only bill that the legislature passed in the session last Friday, the special session.
Yes.
And it does not apply only to Nike, of course. Is that right?
That is correct. If you have another business out there that's able to invest $150 million of capital and that also promises to create at least 500 jobs in a five-year period of time, you would be eligible for this.
Was the legislature able to learn at all anything about the details of Nike's plan?
I am not familiar with that. I am, no, I cannot tell you.
In other words, we don't know just exactly what Nike has up its sleeve and what it wants to build and whom it wants to hire, how many people, and all that kind of stuff?
I'm not saying that that's not out there. I do not know that.
You know, I was wondering, I mean, I was, when I was reading that bill, I was thinking it is, of course, helpful to the Oregon economy. By the way, Nike is a huge employer in the Beaverton area, and it pays very well, and it's a big factor in the Oregon economy, so it's hard to fault the legislature for asking what the company did, what the company wanted. So, but I was wondering about this. Nike does most of its design work and sales work and administrative work in Oregon, but most of its manufacturing is done overseas. Isn't that right?
Well, they do do a certain amount. I mean, I don't know exactly what the percentage of it is, but I do, I mean, we are aware that they have major investments outside of our state.
Are you aware of any Nike garment shoe factories or garment factories in Oregon?
Garment factories?
Garments, garments.
Yeah, garment, or shoes. I am not aware of any.
I'm not aware of any. Are there any that you're aware of, Hasso?
No, I'm not. And my point, that I'm sort of building up to yours, it would be wonderful, I mean, Nike is a great company, of course, and they're very successful, and they produce a lot of good stuff. But wouldn't it be wonderful if they could also, I mean, and at the moment, they're headquartered and concentrated in the Beaverton area, Portland area. Wouldn't it be wonderful if they could make plans to open up a shoe factory someplace where, out in the rest of the state, where there's a need for manufacturing jobs, for example? Suppose they built a shoe factory in Albany or something like that? Wouldn't that be something?
It would be nice. Hey, let me interject this. We did put in a request to Nike to be involved in the show. They declined it, but we asked them four questions. Why was a special session needed? Why should Nike be given an agreement to keep taxing structure in place as current? Why is this so important? Why now? How will the state benefit? Their answers were this. Nike is a global company with a long history in Oregon. We support this proposed legislation as a way to help us continue to grow in Oregon, according to Don Blair, chief financial officer for Nike. Why now? With the significant growth in our employee base, we are reaching the capacity of our existing facilities. As for the tax question, this is an assurance of tax certainty. It is an extension of current tax policy. Legislation requires Nike, according to Nike, this is how they read it, to commit to creating at least 500 jobs, we've already talked about that, invest at least $150 million capital investment over five years. We do not, we don't have specifics to share on what we'll be planning to do beyond that. Finally, their statement, we appreciate the legislative leadership, community leaders, the entire legislature's willingness to act quickly and decisively. They are, this is a very positive step forward, not only for our company, but for the state of Oregon. We are looking forward to reaching an agreement with the governor as soon as possible. And that concludes Nike's emailed statement to us. The comment that I have is this, and I wish this were making a bigger wave on the national scene. It seems to me that this is essentially what companies are saying to governments, state, federal government, is that we are not, we're very concerned about making investments into the future because we don't know what the taxing structure is going to look like. Nike stepping forward and saying, guarantee to us what the taxing structure will be, and we'll invest in the future. I wish this kind of message could resonate to Washington DC so they could say, folks, you gotta make a decision, and you've got to, we've got to know what this looks like or else we're not putting our money where our mouth is in creating jobs. That's essentially to what this means to me. What is your comment on that, Andy?
Well, I think, Dave, you hit it on the head. I mean, when you just, no action is, I mean, poor for the country, it's poor for business, and constant arguing, it doesn't help either. At least you saw a proactive effort here last Friday to do something for business, though there might only be just a few other businesses in the state eligible to receive that benefit. One of the things, I want to shift gears here, but stay true to what we're talking about.
Sure.
There were numerous bills that were introduced down in the Joint Revenue Committee on Friday and through the week to move forward with this package, staying with the same theme of what we eventually did. It was lowering it down, scaling it down for who could have been eligible, but the real target with doing that, Dave and Hasso, was the rural communities. If we could have gotten there, just this alone, I really do think it would have been a major step besides just what, and I'm thankful, I don't want to walk away saying I'm not thankful for Nike stepping up in the legislature, doing what we did Friday, but the point being is, this could have been scaled down to a degree where it would have had major impact throughout our state and really gotten things moving faster for the economy.
Why did that not happen, Andy?
It was party line vote all the way down.
In other words, who opposed it?
Would have been Democratic side.
Okay, okay. We're running real late on a break here. We need to take a break right now, and this is Valley Talk. Be right back.
The Osgood File, sponsored in part by the Exogen Temporal Scanner Thermometer, changing the way the world takes temperature. This is Charles Osgood. The rhinoceros poachers in South Africa have been hitting their rhino populations with technology that doesn't give the poor rhinos very much of a chance. The poaching gangs have been using high-powered weapons, helicopters, and night vision goggles. But for change now, technology is being employed against the poachers in the form of the Seeker aircraft. What they're doing after this. I have five kids and three grandkids, and of course, they all get sick now and again, but taking a temperature is now easier than ever, thanks to the Exogen Temporal Scanner Thermometer. All you have to do is scan the forehead, and you get a fast, accurate reading every single time. In fact, it's so accurate that thousands of hospitals and clinics use it too. So, say goodbye to those old, uncomfortable, and slippery thermometers. Say hello to the Exogen Temporal Scanner Thermometer, changing the way the world takes temperature. Available at Costco and other fine retailers.
Because Mike switched to GEICO and saved hundreds of dollars on car insurance, his money clip wants to shake his hand firmly for a solid three seconds, but it can't. Fact is, most money clips don't have hands to shake with. Switch to GEICO, and every time you notice the extra cash, you'll know your money clip wants to give you a firm handshake. But remember, it can't. It doesn't have hands. It is, however, happy that you're saving money.
GEICO, 15 minutes could save you 15% or more on car insurance.
David Mabunda, the head of South Africa's National Parks, says it is vitally important to stop the slaughter of the rhinoceros by international gangs who are in search of the rhino horns, which are sold in Asia as traditional medicine at prices higher than gold.
Rhinos are part of our ecosystem, and as such, we can't lose them. We can't afford to lose them. They are really critical in the balance of nature that we have in our country.
The Seeker aircraft have heat sensors that are designed to locate and intercept poachers before they can strike. Mabunda doesn't want to tip off the bad guys by being too specific.
The aircraft is an aerial capability that will be able to attach whatever equipment that we need for specific times and specific purposes. It will cover intelligence. It will also assist us in terms of dealing with all the other channels of poaching that we might have. So, it's less noisy, nimble, and quite agile.
And soon, this effort will be reinforced by a fleet of drones, unmanned aircraft of the sort our military's been using in Afghanistan, and are already being used to protect the rhino population in Nepal. The Osgood File transcripts, podcasts, and MP3s of these programs can be found at the osgutfile.com. This is Charles Osgood on the CBS Radio Network.
I'm going to have a great Christmas, but this year I'll have to really stretch my budget. I'm keeping it simple by shopping at the cutest little jewelry store in the area, Mid Valley Gems and Jewelry. They'll even wrap my gifts for free. Lovely estate items, distinctive designer pieces, always some great sale items, and their prices and quality are always better than the chain stores. For the collectors on your list, 2012 proof sets and silver dollars. Collectible Christmas coins, too. Coin collector supplies and starter kits, stocking stuffers from under $10. Smart shoppers know where to buy fine jewelry and gifts for less now and anytime. So, if you were thinking jewelry is too expensive for your gift list, think again. Let Mid Valley Gems and Jewelry make this Christmas the best ever. Mid Valley Gems and Jewelry, on Pacific, just down from Wendy's in Albany.
Pride, it's that simple. Now, that's a motto that most everyone can relate to. It's the way Flowers &amp; Moore has operated their business since 1991. Embrace your special someone or decorate that special event by picking out a beautiful bouquet of roses or flower arrangement that is fresh and arranged with pride. Flowers &amp; Moore is an FTD florist that ships anywhere. They deliver locally and are easy to find across... an FTD florist that ships anywhere. They deliver locally and are easy to find across from Pops at seven forty Southeast Madison in Albany. Call Flowers and More, five four one nine two eight eighty-two eighty-five. It's that simple.
The Car Show, Saturday afternoons on News Talk fifteen eighty, KGAL.
This is Valley Talk. One more question with Andy Olson. Also Herring.
Andy, you served on a commission that was looking for ways to save money on prisons. The commission issued its report yesterday. In summary, what did it recommend?
Bottom line on this, the twelve members that participated in this for the past six months, Also, there were numerous concepts that were provided from the commission to the governor. And in it, it would, well, one, the key thing for the whole thing, if any changes are done at all, public safety is kept in mind, accountability for the offender, but also using dollars wisely as well. It all focuses a lot of it toward anyways sentencing guidelines and also corrections issued for dealing with the release of inmates in a timely manner, but also what to do with them for getting them turned around for reentry.
Thanks, Andy.
Okay, that's about time. We have Valley Talk tomorrow. Andy, thank you for being with us on the show. We're going to take a look at what it's like to be a commercial fisherman on the Bering Sea in Alaska. Is it as dangerous as you think? We're told yeah. We'll be talking about that tomorrow with the person who did that. Valley Talk with Also Herring. I'm Dave Adams, and thanks for being with us on the program today.
Banking these days can be pretty impersonal. You've got your big banks, your internet banks, your do-it-yourself banks, and your too-big-to-fail banks. That's why you might be arrested in an alternative. Willamette Community Bank. Hello, this is Bill Higbee, residential lender. You deserve better service without sacrificing a thing. So, if you're feeling underserved, make the switch to the best banking option out there with branches in Albany and Lebanon.
Willamette Community Bank, service like no other, we promise. Member FDIC, equal housing lender.
What's your New Year's resolution? If your answer involves getting your finances in order, why wait till the new year? That's a resolution that deserves your attention today. Hey, everybody, Jay Farner here from Quicken Loans. A great way to shape up your finances for the new year is our exclusive Yorgage. A Quicken Loans Yorgage is better than a traditional mortgage, because it's a fixed-rate home loan that allows you to select a term that's best for your budget, anywhere from eight to thirty years. Our eight thousand-plus team members are dedicated to guiding you to the best mortgage decision with certainty. The rate today on an eight-year fixed Yorgage is an incredible two-point-seven-five percent, APR three-point-four-three percent. And for three years in a row now, J.D. Power and Associates has ranked Quicken Loans highest in the nation in customer satisfaction for primary mortgage origination. Call Quicken Loans right now at eight hundred Quicken. That's eight hundred Quicken, or visit us at quickenloans.com.
For J.D. Power and Associates award information, visit jdpower.com. Call for additional cost information. Other restrictions may apply. Equal Housing Lender, license in all fifty states, NMLAS number thirty thirty.
This Christmas, By Mart has the big savings you'll love on the brand names you trust. Give a KitchenAid Professional Six Hundred Stand Mixer. Save one hundred dollars off the everyday low By Mart price and get a fifty-dollar mail-in rebate. Get Wrangler Men's Relaxed Fit Jeans in black or blue, they're only fourteen eighty-eight a pair. Save over ten dollars on an LG Compact DVD Player. It's just twenty-eight eighty-eight. Sale prices end December twenty-second at By Mart, just right for Christmas.